Do now adjourn, Sam Rusworth.
Thank you, I'm Deputy Speaker. And before I begin my speech, may I begin by paying my respects to a constituent of mine, Curtis Davis, who was a resident of Shildon and who worked for Durham Police, who sadly died yesterday in difficult circumstances. And I know that he will be missed by his colleagues in the police force and by his family. And my thoughts and prayers are with all of them. My honourable Speaker, like many in this place, I spend a lot of my time knocking doors and listening to residents. And one of the things that has never ceased to impress me about the people in Bishop Auckland is the way that they love their community and their neighbourhoods. And the pride that people take in the little things, like the physical appearance, the beauty, the local environment, but also the safety of our roads. I want to use this adjournment debate to highlight some examples of where people in villages and towns across my constituency are fed up and frustrated and feel disempowered by the number of occasions that they ask for simple changes to road safety, to enhance their community, but are knocked back by bureaucrats who tell them that they apparently know better than the people living on those streets, what their experiences. I will take your interest.
I thank my honourable friend for taking my intervention so soon and put her behind me. And I would pay tribute to Lloyd and Hester with Speedwatch, seeing to the work they do. Part of the issue, I think, that I come across when people in my constituency talk to you about road safety, is the fact that when you ask for these changes we make, the county councils come back to you and say there's been no fatalities or there've been no accidents on the stretch of the road. Surely what we need to do is be proactive, not reactive to these problems?
I hear that same anecdote far too often for it to not be true, that people are told that due to a lack of fatalities, that we can't intervene. That is not how we risk assess. We don't wait for someone to die before we ascertain that there is a risk. I will.
Thank you, thank you for giving way. And highway safety is something that I've been working on for a number of years now, particularly around the communities of the A167 in Durham, Lowbonnes Bank, Tollhouse Road and Neville's Cross. And particularly a place, Shincliff, which has 40% of all fatalities and road accidents in the city of Durham. And they've been told again and again that nothing can or will be done, despite other areas with less road accidents or seeing road improvements. Would you agree with me that one of the biggest barriers to road improvements in County Durham is the arbitrary and rather baffling decisions of County Durham Council Highways Department?
100% agree with that assessment. And it seems that it doesn't really matter who's in power, that the councillors don't seem to get listened to either. And I think that this is a problem. It's a democratic problem that we've got so many people who are saying the same thing, only to be ignored over and over again. So I welcome that intervention. Can I just say at this point as well, I'm so grateful that so many colleagues have joined tonight. And I think that that's a testament really to the frustrations that we all feel, because the experience that the member for the City of Durham just expressed, I think is probably one that we're going to hear several times. And I've deliberately kept my own speech short so that I can take as many interventions.
I thank the honourable member for inviting an intervention. And in my constituency of Ealing Southall, road safety is a huge concern of local people. And this is despite the fact that in London, London boroughs do have the power to set speed limits. And in fact, most of Ealing Southall is a 20 mile per hour zone. However, the council don't have the power to enforce the speed limit. Only the Metropolitan Police have that power. So does my honourable friend agree that it is important that we also consider whether councils that already have the right to set speed limits should also have the power to enforce them?
Thank you, that's an excellent point that I hadn't considered in my speech. So I'll tack it on to the end. And I welcome that intervention. And may I just say to the minister as well, that there will be a lot of interventions tonight, but perhaps we could have some sort of deal where if she gives in to my demands 30 minutes in, we don't take it for the full two and a half hours. That we could take this debate. How could I, how could I not?
Deputy Speaker, can I commend the honourable gentleman for Bishop Auckland for bringing this forward? We don't have parish councils in Northern England. What we do have is a very, very important role for councils. They don't, and they are not the enforcers of the road safety, they're not the enforcers of the police in relation to, but they do have an active role. But it's clear for one thing, that local knowledge, the very thing the honourable gentleman referred, local knowledge is so imperative when considering wide ranging road safety issues. So does the honourable member not agree that joined up thinking between branches of government is essential to improve safety and to ensure that people power always wins?
I welcome his point about joined up thinking. And I'll just make some brief progress in my speech. And just say at the heart of what I'm asking for today is for town and parish councils to be listened to. Because I meet with them so often, and they are the most local level of government, the closest to the people that live in those neighbourhoods. And so often, they are asking time and time again for the same basic things and not being listened to. And if I may just give some examples, I want to start with the village of High Grange in my constituency. It has two 60 mile an hour country lanes that run either side of it. And so I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the children who ask their parents, 'Mam or Dad, can I go across the road to the park?'. But the parents don't feel safe letting their children cross that 60 mile an hour lane to the park. I speak also for the pensioners who on the other side, one moment, for the pensioners on the other side of the same village, who want to get across the road to the allotment. But they don't feel safe crossing to the allotment. I'll give way.
Thank you. And thank you so much to my honourable friend for bringing tonight's debate. Chris and Nicole in my constituency lost their daughter Becky nearly 18 years ago. And on losing her, they discovered a postcode lottery for bereavement services. Some police services provide them, some don't. And whilst it's important we discuss road safety measures here today, I think hopefully my honourable friend will agree that what's also important is we end that lottery. And every single family who loses someone in a road traffic accident has the bereavement support they should get.
Thank you. I think that's difficult to disagree with. It was an excellent intervention. If I may give another example, as well as the High Grange village, Haudenlohir, where Hargill Road comes down a fast lane. And I spoke to a gentleman there recently who told me that he no longer feels safe going out in his electric scooter and going up the road because of the speed that traffic comes hurtling down the bank. And the people there have been asking for traffic enforcement measures, as has just been mentioned by from Ealing.
Thank you on that point. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the member on securing this very important debate. We can see how many people this affects across the country. But on the point of speeding in our communities, does the honourable member agree with me, with my sentiments when I became a Borough Councillor in Amber Valley for Kilburn, Denby, Holbrook and Horstley, that the parish councils doing fantastic work with the Speedwatch scheme can be integral to making sure that the councils do listen, that the county councils or unitary councils do listen and collect the data that can be so important to make the changes in our local communities to speed limits, to road safety measures that are so important for us to have?
Intervention, I think that parish councillors do absolutely sterling work and those, all who volunteer and give their time for Speedwatch schemes, so making life that bit better for the people in their communities. But nonetheless, they get frustrated that often that data isn't taken where they want it to. In the village of Hamsterley, in my constituency, the traffic through to Hamsterley Forest on the weekend is often a cause of concern. Villages there have asked if the village couldn't be made a 20 mile an hour zone. That to me, sounds like a reasonable request. In fact, I've often heard them ask me, why can't we be more like Wales, where Welsh villages are allowed to be 20 mile an hour zones? And they get frustrated that they don't have that option.
On that point, why be like Wales when you can be like Edinburgh? Will you join me and pay tribute to former councillor Lesley Hines? You've never met a more humble Labour councillor, but back in 2016, she rolled out Edinburgh's citywide 20 mile an hour zone. In 2022, independent peer reviewed research showed that slight injuries had reduced by 37%, serious injuries had reduced by 33% and fatalities had reduced by 23%. Through the leadership of one person, lives have been saved. And we should be doing this right across the country, do you not agree?
Thank you so much. And I think that's really important data that gives force to this argument, that we're not talking about killing people's joy here, we're talking about enhancing people's joy in their lives, that people feel safe in their village to walk out into the road. I will.
On that point, I thank the honourable member for giving way. In South Derbyshire, we have created a network between my office and that of parish councils right across the constituency. And several parish councils have raised the issue of road safety with me from Repton et al down to Overseal, who have carried out community speed watches and even made a recommendation in a report on to how we can make our roads safer, including having a crossing right across the road from a school. Not least do we have haulage vehicles that go up and down a road that's unsuitable for it with variable speed limits. So does the honourable member agree with me that the best people to make recommendations that should be carried out in their local communities are those parish councillors?
That is exactly the point that I'm making, and I welcome that intervention. I'll move on. Oh, go on, I'll take one more and I'll make a little progress.
I thank him and pay tribute to him for raising these very important matters. And could I also, on a much more serious note, also offer my deepest condolences to two people who lost their lives in a road accident in Reading recently. And I don't want to comment anywhere on that because it's under police investigation. However, what I would like to say is that I commend the work that he's doing. I think there's also a very good point, a related point that needs to be made, that many smaller unitary local authorities have a great deal of local knowledge, like the Borough Council in our town, and yet they are often held back because they're unable to enforce traffic offences such as speeding, even when 20 mile an hour zones or other zones have been introduced. They don't have that power. And rather like a colleague from West London said, it would be wonderful if that power could be delegated to them rather than the police who are very busy.
Thank you. And again, an excellent intervention. I've mentioned High Grange, Haudenlohir and Hamsterley. We're only in H, let's move forward. Cowden Gate in my constituency, the residents there have to put up with 60 mile an hour traffic, driving past just two metres from their front windows. And that's an area where they've asked for some traffic calming. I will give way.
And I thank you deeply for bringing this debate forward. It's actually something that came up on the first visit I had to a school in my constituency, Walton Hall Academy, which is actually on a stretch of 60 mile an hour road. And parents find it incredibly stressful taking their SCND children to and from school when they're trying to get them out. The young people there are trying to do a campaign to get the speed limit changed, but they're hitting brick walls basically with the difficulty in getting the highways authority to listen. So does my honourable friend agree with me that community schools and young people particularly should be supported by the highways authority and listened to on matters like this?
Thank you. I think she makes an excellent point about communities where there are schools. I have one, Toft Hill Primary School, which is on the A68. And Toft Hill is another area where children are having to cross the road in difficult conditions. They lost their lollipop person that was helping the children to cross.
I thank my honourable friend, he's been very generous with his time. And as many of the honourable members have said, it's such a testament to the importance of this issue that we're all here this evening. Minister can relax, in this occasion I'm not going to talk about the A1, I will in the future. But I am going to talk about the northern bypass in Morpeth, which is exactly has this problem, where there's a 60 mile an hour zone. Labour Party activists a couple of years ago and the local parish council made a case to the county council that a safer crossing was necessary. That was in 2023. And the issue hasn't moved on. So simply again, would you agree with me that it is local people, local parish councils, local town councils, who understand their circumstances better and they should be listened to and given more power in this regard?
Thank you. And on the matter of parish councils, I met recently with members of Staindrop Parish Council. They've been asking for more than a decade, simply to have two crossing points at the entrance and exit of their village. It's a beautiful village that sits between Bishop Auckland and Barnard Castle on the main road. And traffic often doesn't drop its speed down to 30. And pensioners in Staindrop have said that something as simple as crossing the road to attend a social function is something that they actually feel put off doing because of fear crossing that road. One moment. And it's a travesty to me that Staindrop Parish Council can ask for the same thing over and over again, and the highways authority just keeps saying no.
I thank my honourable friend for giving way. And as a proud Cornish MP, I'm as strong an advocate as anyone for the role of parish and town councils in having their eyes and ears on the ground and understanding where, for example, those most serious needs for crossings are, as he's so eloquently described in his constituency. But does my honourable friend agree with me on the huge importance of a need for a crossing in Nansledon, in my constituency, where we've seen a new key strategic road built, but with little consideration for the new flow of traffic coming into the village?
Truth is, I don't know if he needs a crossing in his constituency. But isn't this the point? Because I'm not local to his constituency. But I tell you who does know, his parish council will know and the people who live there will know. And if that's what they're asking for, they should be listened to. I will.
I thank him for giving way. He's been incredibly generous with his time. And the point he's advancing is so important. And actually, it's not just about people's safety, although that is really important. Just this week, we've seen a horrible incident in my constituency where some geese have been run over, a very traumatic incident for residents. So does he agree that it's so vital this government sets out a new national road safety strategy? And would he also agree that it's important that they listen to local voices from communities like mine and like his as they draw up that vital piece of work?
I mean, look, all of us are here, and we've all stayed late because we all are the voice of the people that we represent. And clearly, they're all telling us the same thing. And it does fall to the government to do something about the challenges that we're raising tonight. I just want to quickly mention two or three other places, because I love my constituents, but they are jealous. And I know that I will get grief if I neglect to mention places like Fleet Street in Bishop Auckland, where there's just no road markings at a four way stop, and where people don't know who to give way to. And it's a regular source of concern for parents in the Cocteau Hill area. Or if I don't mention Stanley Crook and a lot of the hilltop villages, where the traffic just doesn't want to slow down as they pursue their journey through people's residential areas. Or if I don't mention Kininvie, where two years ago, a car crashed into someone's dining room, and the family was lucky not to be in the dining room at the time. But that is an area where people have been saying for donkey's years that that is a dangerous junction. People have known it, and eventually a serious accident happened. I will.
I thank the honourable member for giving way and for bringing this really important debate into the House today. My community, there's an area that's called Griffidam. And actually, those residents have been trying for years and years to have something happen to their local community. One of the things that's interesting is about the benchmarks. Local knowledge goes over and above that. Not a lot of the accidents get reported nowadays. And does he agree with me that actually we need to be looking at local knowledge that goes much further than reported accidents and incidents?
I think that's an excellent point about local knowledge. I think back to the High Grange village that I was talking about, where it's only the local people who understand the importance of the allotments and the park and the difficulty crossing the road, because both of those are sort of just outside the village, on the other sides of the main roads. Yeah, I will.
I thank the honourable gentleman for giving way. And it's a testament to his popularity that we're all here this evening supporting him on what is a really important issue. But whether it's Bambi Street in Sanford Hill or Newcastle Lane in Penkill or Weldon Road in Fenton, that local knowledge that he so rightly points to, hasn't come to me via a parish council, because I have a very urban constituency. It's actually come through diligent and hardworking residents associations, who often in urban constituencies provide the very same function that he's pointing out tonight. So perhaps when the minister is up answering, we can encourage her not only to give proper consideration to the views of parish councils, but also to those residents associations in urban communities that do so much for where they live.
Thank you, I think that's a fair point. Again, pay tribute to all the people that serve at that level of government, particularly people who give their time freely to serve in residence associations just to make life better for their neighbours and the people who live around them. I'm going to mention two more places before I move on. Evenwood Chapel Lane, where residents often complain about speeding, as well as High Etherley. And we have a bypass running through Bishop Auckland. A year ago, we had a new shopping area built one side of it. And for a year now, people have been dangerously crossing the bypass from one side to the other. It is in the 106 agreement that there is supposed to be a safe crossing point, but it seems to be the last thing on the developers' minds, with everything else coming first. And every week, people taking risks as they cross over at that bypass. We have a petition out about that. And further up the bypass at Brax Farm as well, it's a place that a lot of children are crossing the road.
Yes, I will. I thank my honourable friend for giving way. He's been most generous with his time. And thank you for securing this really important debate. There's a busy bridge on the A171 in my constituency, and it's used by year seven and eight pupils based at the Aeryhill site of Whitby School, as well as parents of pupils who attend the Aeryhill Primary School, and tourists photographing the steam trains that can be seen below. It's a very noisy and windy bridge, it has heavy road and foot traffic, and it's high above the estuary. Despite this, there are no zebra crossings or raised curbs, and the speed limit is 40 miles an hour. And understandably, local residents are really worried. They've tried to lower the speed limit to 30 miles an hour, but North Yorkshire Council isn't interested, so they've raised the petition themselves. Would my honourable friend agree with me that this is exactly why parish and town councils should be given road safety powers, including the ability to introduce speed limits?
I mean, that is what I'm calling for tonight, is for parish councils to be able to have, and town councils, to be able to decide the speed limits on the roads within their boundaries. They represent the voice of the people in those areas. As I move on from a tour of my constituency, which you're all welcome to visit some of these lovely villages sometime. Anywhere you want to come. I must say, this started out for me as sort of hearing one anecdote, and then I'd hear another anecdote, and then I'd hear another, until it became obvious that this is a serious issue. And it's not just about fatalities. I accept that fatalities are actually low, thank goodness, but it is about the quality of people's lives. It's about the fact that there are too many children missing out on play. And there are too many older people missing out on social activities because they don't feel safe crossing their roads. So I looked at, you know, what are the regulations that these faceless bureaucrats are using when they so regularly say no to people? And it turns out that the Road Traffic Regulations Act came into effect in 1984, the year I was born, so it's as old as me. And it doesn't give powers to parish and town councils. They have no statutory role beyond advisory consultation.
Would my honourable friend give way?
I will.
I thank him very much for giving way, and I echo the comments of other colleagues, he's being very generous with his time. And thank him for calling this debate and giving us the opportunity to debate the role of parish councils. I think it's something that we seldom do, but should do a lot more often. In my constituency of Cannet Chase, an issue which is raised really frequently with me in the context of road safety, is that of parking on double yellow lines. And in the face of completely absent enforcement, my local residents are always looking for creative solutions. In my home village of Norton Keynes and the neighbouring village of Heathase, both parish councils have asked our highways authority, Staffordshire County Council, to allow them to pay for extra enforcement activity. Really pragmatic solution which has been refused repeatedly by the previous Conservative administration. I'm encouraging those councils to try again, now that we have a new Reform administration, to see whether this fresh thinking they keep promising us will extend to parking enforcement. But would my honourable friend agree with me that whether it's traffic calming, speeding or parking, our parish and town councils could play a much greater role in keeping their residents safe?
Thank you. I welcome his extension of the debate to parking, which is also a road safety issue. I've lost track of how many times residents in different villages and towns I represent have talked to me about ambulances that couldn't make their way up a street because there was no space, because people aren't respecting traffic rules. And again, it's just another way that people feel that they don't have control over the very street that they live on. Makes some progress. So parish and town councils operate under the Local Government Act, and they have no highway or transport powers unless these are explicitly delegated. So powers could be delegated to them. They can raise local issues, but they can't initiate or enforce any regulatory changes. So my asks of government are simple. One is, could we not look at primary legislation to grant town and parish councils the power to set enforceable speed limits? And if that's a step too far, could we not at least provide stronger statutory consultative powers, that they have the powers to raise, to force a review of speed limits? And stronger powers to appeal the bad decisions that get made and to demand proper explanations for the amount of times that the computer says no? Yeah, on that point.
I thank the honourable member for giving way. The member for Bishop Auckland has done tremendously well tonight, and has been so generous with his time. I am fortunate enough in Leeds Southwestern Morley to represent two parish councils, one town council and numerous residence groups. And across my constituency, I've got dozens of councillors in Gildersum, Trigglington, Morley, who obviously have the expert knowledge, the street by street knowledge, in some cases the house by house knowledge, to make these decisions for themselves. Now, I appreciate he will accept they should have the power to change speed limits in their area. So perhaps he'd like to comment, and maybe the minister would too in her summing up, on the mean average speed tests that are often used to restrict speeding checks, to restrict speeding limits in certain roads. I have been tired, my residents are tired too, have been told that the mean average speed is too low to change things, even though the lived experience of people on that road know that the outliers are causing all of the problems. Does he agree?
Order. Just before we proceed, I think I'm right in saying that now every member present who's likely to want to intervene has done so. So, well done. I wouldn't wish honourable members to believe that ordinarily, you're likely to get away with the length of interventions that you've got away with tonight. This is an important issue, I understand that. There are constituency issues that need to be raised and placed on the record, I understand that. But don't take the lenience of the chair for granted. And do bear in mind, as one honourable lady hasn't, that if you intervene, you are expected to stay to the end of the debate and hear the minister's response. Sam Rusworth.
Thank you for your wisdom. I'll move towards the end of my speech. It's a simple ask, it's about the power that we give, but it's also about funding. I recognise that sometimes the reason why the answer is no, is because decisions have to be taken. And I have two thoughts on that really. One is, could we not look at ways to make the decision making process less expensive? One of those ways would be to simply trust local knowledge more than we do. And if necessary, could we not mandate that councils put aside more funding for this? Because it is clearly and evidently, and we see from the interventions tonight, it's one of the top issues that our constituents raise with us. But they have a right at all levels of government, from this place down to their parish councils, to know that when they as residents speak with a collective voice, that that voice gets heard and respected. Councils are democratically elected, accountable and rooted in their communities. Residents' lived experience offers better long term insight than one off traffic monitoring snapshots. Current systems, the current system prioritises administrative thresholds over genuine local need. Government commitment to localism and community empowerment should apply to road safety too. And I genuinely welcome this government's commitment to giving back control to the British people over many parts of their lives. But this is another area where people are asking to have more control. And it would be, I miss me before I finish, just to put one more road safety issue on record, having unsuccessfully bobbed through two lots of transport questions and the spending review, to raise with the minister the future of the A66, which is an important piece of national infrastructure, not decided by parish councils, but decided by the Treasury. And I would be grateful to know what the timeframe is for getting a response on that, because it is, the future of the A66 dueling is in uncertainty. And it is a really important piece of national infrastructure for the north of England, for people that are crossing the Pennines from east to west, that would reduce the time it takes to get to the Lake District, that would mean that there are far fewer road closures that really impact on people's lives. And it's an area where there have been far too many fatalities. So I will just steal my last few seconds to put that on record as well. And thank you all for your time this evening.
Minister, Lilian Greenwood.
Well, thank you, Mr Deputy Speaker. I'd like to begin by congratulating my honourable friend for securing this debate and for making such incredible good use of the rather extra time that we've had. And of course, for speaking so passionately about road safety, he's clearly a powerful advocate for his constituents. And we really did have a tour across the many villages and communities that he represents. I enjoyed his efforts to name-check, I think, every single one of them. Mr Deputy Speaker, I am pleased to be back here again for the second adjournment debate about road safety in less than a week. And the reason I'm happy to be discussing this important issue again is not just because I am the minister for the future of roads, which should of course be a safer future, but because this issue matters to all of us. We, our families, our friends, our colleagues, all use our roads, whether as drivers, riders, pedestrians, cyclists or passengers in buses and taxis. And we all deserve the right to go on our journeys and know that we will get home safely. Now, unusually for an adjournment debate, we've heard from, I think, 19 honourable members this evening, not only from my honourable friend for Bishop Auckland, but for the honourable members and my honourable friends for Harlow, City of Durham, Ealing Southall, Strangford, Northampton South, Amber Valley, Edinburgh South West, South Derbyshire, Reading East, Stafford, North Northumberland, St Austell and Newquay, Bracknell, North West Leicestershire, Stoke-on-Trent Central, Scarborough and Whitby, Cannock Chase, Leeds South West and Morley. I very much hope I have not missed anyone on that list. No one, and we all agree, it's clear that we all agree, that no one should be killed or injured on our roads. Now, improving road safety is one of my department's highest priorities. There were 1,624 fatalities in reported road collisions in Great Britain in 2023, and more than 28,000 people were seriously injured, which, I haven't done the numbers, but I suspect that means that in the time that we've been debating this, there will have been someone seriously injured somewhere on Great Britain's roads. Fatalities and injuries from road traffic collisions are simply unacceptable. And this government is working hard to prevent these tragedies for all road users. Road safety is fundamental to everything this government stands for. Safer roads underpin our national missions, driving economic growth, enabling greener journeys through active travel, easing pressure on the National Health Service and ensuring that everyone can travel safely. And that's why my department is developing our road safety strategy, the first in over a decade, and we'll set out more details in due course. Now, honourable members talked about implementing road safety at a local level, and local government is the main delivery body for road safety. Local authorities have a statutory duty under section 39 of the Road Traffic Act 1988 to take steps to both reduce and prevent collisions. It's for local authorities to determine what measures are appropriate in individual cases because they have the local knowledge. And many, many honourable friends have talked about that tonight, the importance of local knowledge. And it's right that they focus on the areas of highest risk, which may be where tragic collisions have occurred. But let me be clear, Mr Deputy Speaker, there is nothing to stop them implementing road safety measures elsewhere. Indeed, it is entirely right to consider what action can be taken to prevent collisions from happening in the first place.
Will she give way on that point?
I will, of course.
Thank you. Although she lives in Edinburgh South West, Amanda from my constituency wrote to me about a power which English councils don't have when it comes to road safety, and that of course is pavement parking. Is this something the minister's considered?
Well, I thank my honourable friend for once again raising the issue of pavement parking. As I hope he knows, this is something I'm very keen that we address. It's been far too long since the 2020 consultation on options to address pavement parking. And I look forward to the opportunity to set out, to publish that consultation and set out next steps in due course. I hope, Mr Deputy Speaker, that no local authority claims that road safety measures can only be considered at locations where there have been fatalities. This is simply not the case. Now, I understand the importance of using resources effectively and where they are most needed, but they should never be arbitrary. This government is committed to the devolution of powers to local level, and as we've shown through the publication of the Devolution White Paper. But it's important that the right powers are held at the right level. Highways and traffic responsibilities sit at county council or unitary level. And this enables local authorities to deliver services in an efficient and consistent way across their areas. Whilst we have no plans to devolve these powers further to parish councils, it is nevertheless crucially important that local highway authorities engage with local partners, including parish and town councils, when deciding on measures to take, as they can play an absolutely critical role in identifying road safety issues in their areas. They're often the first to hear about near misses or dangerous incidents, acting as a vital link with local residents' day-to-day experiences. As we've heard time and time again this evening, local parish and town councils, and indeed residence associations, as my honourable friend from Stoke-on-Trent said, and indeed other local community groups, it may be groups of schoolchildren or parents or a wide range of groups, have incredibly valuable local knowledge. And they need to be listened to and engaged with. Now, numerous honourable members talked about the need for action to reduce speed, including lower speed limits and to enforce speed limits such as police action and speed cameras. Honourable members will know that the enforcement of road traffic law and how available police resources are deployed is the responsibility of individual chief constables and police and crime commissioners, taking into account the specific local problems and demands with which they're faced. When it comes to speed, local authorities have the power to set speed limits on their roads, and I mean highways authorities. It's important that this is done in partnership with town and parish councils and in consultation with the residents affected. I was really sorry to hear that in my honourable friend's constituency, local calls for lower speed limits on specific stretches of roads that he mentioned have not been responded to by Durham County Council. And I would urge him and the town and parish councils and Durham County Council to discuss the matter as a matter of priority and try to find a way forward. As my honourable friend described so vividly, dangerous roads do have very real impact on the lives of his constituents, perhaps especially children, older people and disabled people. And this debate, I think, will send a clear message to Durham County Council and perhaps to other highways authorities about the strength of feelings, not only from his constituents but from my honourable friend's local communities, about road safety issues and the need to be accountable to local residents about the decisions that they take to fulfil their duties. Now, local authorities have a range of traffic management measures available to them to help improve safety in residential areas and outside schools. And these include pedestrian crossings, traffic calming measures, school crossing patrols and introduction of a school street where appropriate. Good street design can help improve road safety. The Manual for Streets is our key piece of street design guidance, and it advocates that streets are designed to support appropriate vehicle speeds from the outset. Let's build the right roads that encourage that, rather than having to kind of deal with problems when they arise later. That reduces the risk of collisions and reduces the severity of those collisions that do happen. We expect local authorities to adopt Manual for Streets in setting their own design standards, but ultimately, it's a choice for them. We're working to update the manual to ensure it's still relevant and enables those designing streets to do so in a way that contributes to sustainable, healthy and active communities. It's for local authorities to determine what measures are appropriate in individual cases because they have that local knowledge of their roads. But any authority that wishes to install schemes to improve safety has my department's full backing. Obviously, they'll want to make those decisions in consultation with local communities and the local police. And I very much welcome the support expressed by so many honourable members this evening and agree that sharing local knowledge and working in partnership can be very helpful. Now, my department gave councils updated guidance on setting 20 mile an hour speed limits in March 2024, reminding them to reserve the lower limits for appropriate locations such as outside schools, with safety and local support at the heart of such decisions. I'd like to emphasise that we support 20 mile an hour speed limits in the right places. As well as improving safety, they can enhance quality of life, the environment and the local economy. But 20 mile an hour zones and limits are best considered on a road-by-road basis, based on the safety case, to ensure local consent rather than as blanket measures. And local councils will want to make these decisions about local implementation, again, as I say, in consultation with local communities and local police. They know their roads best, and I simply cannot and should not dictate to them from Westminster. Now, while local authorities are free to make their own decisions about the speed limits of roads under their care, provided they take account of the relevant legislation and guidance, they are rightly accountable to local people for those decisions. My honourable friend and his constituents will rightly expect the county council not only to listen to their concerns, but to be held accountable for the decisions that they make, whether that's a decision to install traffic measures or where they decline to do so. And I think that applies to all the honourable members who've made the case today, the powerful case for lower speed limits. Of course, the Safe System approach to road safety acknowledges that even careful drivers can make mistakes, but no one should be killed or seriously injured as a result of a mistake. And we know that collisions at higher speeds are much more likely to have tragic outcomes. That's why the argument holds for reducing speed limits in particular circumstances. Now, the department will look at what we can do to support local authorities, and we stand ready to work with all those looking to improve road safety at the local level. My department recognises the excellent work that parish and town councils do to improve the safety of local roads, including their involvement with community speed watch schemes. And I'm grateful to my honourable friend, the member for Amber Valley, for highlighting this valuable volunteering this evening. Community speed watch schemes are police-run and enable local volunteers to work with the police and other agencies to address identified road policing issues in their particular localities. Drivers who are detected speeding are sent letters and the police may take further action if a driver is detected multiple times. Of course, decisions on when to adopt community speed watch schemes are operational matters for police and crime commissioners and chief constables in conjunction with their local policing plans. Now, the responsibility for keeping our roads safe cannot fall solely to central or local government. All road users have a part to play, and they must all comply with road traffic law in the interests of their own safety and that of other road users. As set out in the Highway Code, the hierarchy of road users places those road users most at risk in the event of a collision right at the top of the hierarchy. The objective of the hierarchy of road users is not to give priority to pedestrians, cyclists and horse riders in every situation, but rather to ensure a more mutually respectful and considerate culture of safe and effective road use that benefits all users. This doesn't detract from requirements for everyone to behave responsibly. There is both a legal and a moral duty for all road users to obey the law, both in terms of safety and creating a culture of respect and consideration for all road users. There are laws in place to ensure that unsafe and dangerous behaviour has no place on our roads and should be dealt with appropriately, with the most effective sanctions and including educational interventions. Enforcement of the law is a matter for the police, who will decide on the evidence of each individual case, whether an offence has been committed and the appropriate action to take. I'd like to conclude by thanking my honourable friend again for securing this timely and important debate. As I said at the start, the government treats road safety with the utmost seriousness, and we are committed to reducing the numbers of those killed and injured on our roads. My department is developing our road safety strategy. It's vitally important. For too long, we've tolerated a lack of progress, and this government is determined to act. I look forward to setting out more details in due course, as indeed we will, on my honourable friend's ambitions for the A66. Thank you.